Father, thank you for this day and Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together. Father, we lift up those that we've, the families of those we've lost to COVID in our community. Father, we also lift up Middle Memorial as they lost an employee due to COVID. Father, we just thank you for the many blessings. We pray for you to be something meaningful. Pray for wisdom in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, Councilmember Willis will do the pledges.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I've got a lot of echo and it seems like there's three or four or five of me saying.
Yeah, just make sure you're muted if you're, uh, you don't need to be talking. So we'll see if that helps. Uh, now we'll go to Pop Commation Awards and Presentations, ECSD School Year Update. Scott Murray.
How you doing? Everybody hear me okay? I'm doing very well, doing very well. So I want to begin by saying, uh, thank you. I'm going to start with, let me pull my slides up. There we go. All right. Can you see that? All right, David?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. Uh, first, thank you, uh, council members, Mayor Turner. Uh, I appreciate this opportunity to spend a few minutes with each of you this evening. I, I can tell you it is my, uh, one year anniversary in, uh, in Ector County. And a lot has happened. In fact, one of my board members recently said to me, you know, did you know that you were signing up for all this a year ago? And, and no, I didn't know that I was signing up for all this, but I can honestly tell you that, that the last year has been, um, while it's been a whirlwind of experiences, it's been equally filled with opportunities. I am thrilled, uh, to be here. In fact, on Friday and in three days from now, I close on a house in, uh, Ector County. And, and so, you know, this will, uh, this will become my home. And I look forward to, to continuing to serve the children and the families of Ector County. Um, I want to spend just a few minutes with you tonight, walking through our plans for the coming year. And I will, uh, date and timestamp this. So this is the 28th of July at about 6:10. And the reason I do that is because more than likely by the time I finish, there will already be a change that we're working on. In fact, today I was on, I had a conversation with the commissioner. And during that conversation, a new set of health guidelines came out. And just as we were getting ready to release to our community, some very clear guidance on what health situations will look like next year, uh, all of that guidance has now been shelved because we have brand new guidance and, and our rules continue to change on a daily basis. So flexibility and agility are two of, of the vocabulary words that we have become very familiar with. And we live those every day. So I'm going to walk you through some slides and, uh, kind of actually probably run through these slides and then, uh, finish up with any questions. Happy to talk about anything that you want to discuss tonight or any questions that I can address for you. I'm happy to do that. So as we open our school year, we made our plans for the coming year with the, the vision and the mission of ECSD in mind. We believe our, as a vision that our students are the future of, of Ector County. We know that, that the future is now. We are, we are currently serving in our public school system, the, the future of our, of our system, the 34,000 students that we serve every single day. Will make up the men and women, uh, that serve on city council, uh, that serve as the mayor of our fair city, that serve as teachers and principals and physicians and firemen and all of the other professionals uh, that we have in our community. We know that the service that we do, our students, to our students is critically important. As we plan for the opening of the school year, uh, we used to set up guiding principles because we knew this year was going to be very different. You can see those nine principles that we use to, to guide the decision-making process on your screen. Equity was a primary driver. We know that we have a large number of students that live in poverty. We know that some of our students, uh, during our remote learning experience did not have the type of learning environment that they needed. We know that some of our students are special ed. We know that, and the list goes on. Many of our students do not have, uh, the type of, of level footing that they need to have an equitable school experience. And equity was a primary driver for the decisions that we made as we start the new school year. We recognize that many of our students will come to us very different uh, in August, not only academically different because of COVID-19, but socially and emotionally different. Uh, the, the last several months for many of our kids has been very traumatic. And we know that those kids will return to us, uh, some of them damaged because of what happened to them emotionally and socially during the COVID-19 experience. So whatever experiences a child has had over the last several months, we know that we needed to design a school year that would meet them exactly where they are. But you can look through these nine, uh, guiding principles and we used those to make the decisions as to how we would serve children in the upcoming school year. We recognize that the effect of COVID is going to be pretty significant in, on our students. And specifically in the, in the academic area, the graph that you're looking at was uh, created by a, a group of researchers that looked at 10 million students in the United States. And this is what they anticipate, uh, the learning loss may be as we welcome students back in August. You could see that, that from, you know, early September through the middle of March, learning was headed on the right trajectory. Students were with, uh, teachers and, and really doing good work. But as soon as schools closed, uh, we began to see that straight line began to uh, turn into a dotted line heading south, heading in the wrong direction, if you will. Um, and what that graph tells us is that in the area of mathematics, many of our students will have up to a year's worth of learning loss. And yes, they may have only missed a few months of school, but the learning loss specifically in mathematics could be up to a full year. And what that translates to is that typical fifth grader enters a grade, they're ready for fifth grade mathematics. But this year, that fifth grader may barely be ready for fourth grade mathematics because of the learning loss. In reading, we see something very similar. We see kids heading on the right trajectory, but then suddenly school closed in the middle of March. And once again, we see that learning loss, especially for our, uh, high poverty students and those fragile students, uh, could be very significant in the area of reading. And we know that we've got to pay extra attention to our more fragile students that suffered, uh, potentially significant learning loss during the COVID-19 experience. So what is our plan to not only address the learning losses that have, that have occurred, but also the social emotional, uh, situations that many of our kids experience? The Texas Education Agency has provided some very clear guidance, uh, some shoulds and some shalls. Those shalls, you could see a few of those on the screen. Uh, they've said that every school in the state of Texas will be open for the 2120, uh, or for the 2021 school year. So ECSD will be open. We will be serving the needs of our kids, uh, throughout the school year. We also have to provide our, our families with choice and I'll walk you through those choices in just a few minutes. But those choices are requirements across the state of Texas. Uh, the state also allows us to have a transition period um, in order, because of local health conditions, and we are certainly dealing with a COVID crisis right now in our own community. So if local conditions determine that we need to phase into the school year, we have the ability to do that. TEA provides four weeks and then our own Board of Trustees could vote to add an additional four weeks. So for a total of eight weeks of transition period as we open the school year. And again, we'll talk more about that in just a few minutes. So those are some of the shalls that TEA has put in place, uh, for school districts across the state of Texas. The first thing that we have to do is to make sure that all of our students and staff members are safe as we, uh, return to school. And you can see some of the things that we will have in place for students and staff members. Uh, I never said, I never thought as a superintendent, I would say that I own 1,300,000 face masks, but we do. Uh, we are prepared, uh, not only for our students, but also staff members, uh, to wear those, uh, face masks each day during the learning experience, uh, thermometers, uh, thousands of gallons of hand sanitizer, face shields, Plexiglas gloves, you know, all of the PPE equipment that we will need to have in place to keep our students and staff members safe. Uh, we've been able to do that. We partnered with our hospitals here in the community to provide some additional, uh, PPE, uh, tools and resources in conjunction with them. And so we're appreciative for their, uh, uh, collaboration during this procurement process. You'll hear some interesting vocabulary words as we start the school year. One of those words is called synchronous, uh, synchronous instruction, much like we are experiencing today. This is a live meeting. We are all engaging with each other. As we start the school year, one, one option that some of our students will have will be to participate in synchronous learning. Um, and so it, from their homes, our kids could experience their teachers in a live virtual environment. It could take place video, uh, as we are experiencing now, could also be in an audio format on a telephone. But synchronous learning is when the student and the teacher are interacting in a live format. The opposite of that is asynchronous learning. You can see the image of the little girl on the computer screens. This is when a student would be doing something that doesn't involve the direct, uh, instruction of the teacher. Perhaps they're using their computer to work on a software application. Uh, maybe they are writing in their journal. Uh, perhaps they are completing a project with some of their peers in a remote environment. But asynchronous learning is when the teacher is not directly involved. And students in ECSD will have an opportunity to experience both synchronous and asynchronous. Again, you'll hear those words used a lot over the next several months. The school day. So what will it look like for elementary kids? We are in the process of preparing, uh, day in the life vignettes. And one of the things that we will purchase, uh, a post on the ECSD website will be some descriptors. What does a typical day look like for an elementary kid, a middle school student and a high school student? As well as what is a typical day for a teacher and a parent and a nurse and, and other types of individuals that engage with us? You'll see more of that in the coming days posted on the ECSD website. But here are a few of the things that I would, uh, encourage you to pay attention to. First of all, at the elementary level, parents have three options. Option number one is, uh, the child attends school five days a week. Option two is the child, uh, is learning virtually in a remote environment, five days a week. So they never come to the physical building. And then option number three is a hybrid option. A one day, uh, for instance, a Monday I'm at school and Tuesday the child is at home. Wednesday, back at school, Thursday at home. So that type of hybrid environment that involves face-to-face with the teacher, coupled with, uh, virtual learning. And those are the three options that our elementary students will have, uh, in ECSD. And starting on July 29th, parents will choose which of those three options that they, uh, that they want for their child. The bullets kind of talk a little, little bit about some of the things that we'll do. We will limit the movement of students trying to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Our students and staff members will be limited in their movement around campus. Uh, as kids will, uh, kind of be self-contained, they'll not be able to use lockers. They won't be able to share tools and resources. Uh, their, their book bag will be their primary storage device. And you'll notice the next to the last bullet, which I hopefully you'll be excited about. One of the things that we are excited about is we will be able to provide every child in ECSD with a computing device. And they will look different depending upon the age of the child, but every student in ECSD will have a device that is provided to them by the school district, if it is something that they, that they wish to use. We do have some students that prefer to use their own tool. But starting next year, every child pre-K through 12th grade at ECSD uh, will have a device of their own provided by the school district and we're happy to be able to do for that. And then you'll notice the last bullet too, which is another exciting announcement. Starting next year, every student in ECSD, all 34,000 kids, uh, will be fed breakfast and lunch free of charge. And that is every single child, no matter who you are or which school you attend, a free lunch or excuse me, free breakfast and lunch, five days a week from ECSD. And we will also include our remote learners in that. So for parents that choose to keep their children at home next year, they will also have the ability to pick up their lunch in a, a curbside service from each of the cafeterias around ECSD. The middle school experience will be very similar to elementary. Again, parents have three options of at school, five days a week, at home, five days a week, or that hybrid back and forth model. Again, parents can choose. You can see, uh, the bullets are basically the same. Every middle school kid will, uh, have a device and then lunches, breakfast and lunch provided for those students as well. The high school is a little bit different. Uh, high school students have two options. Option number one for high school is completely virtual, so they can stay home five days a week and have a synchronous environment, uh, experience with their teachers. Or option two, uh, they can rotate, uh, days, A days and B days. So kind of that hybrid experience for high school kids. The one choice that, that, uh, high school students do not have in ECSD is they cannot choose to be at school every day. Uh, the reason for that is we simply do not, our high schools are not large enough to hold um, all of our students at the same time and maintain social distancing and the other safety procedures that we put in place. So we'll be alternating groups of students, uh, every other day so that we can maintain a safe environment for all of our students and staff members. But you'll also see every high school student will have, um, a device, uh, will feed also our high school students breakfast and lunch free of charge every day. Uh, so some very similar things. And then you can kind of see what a typical high school schedule would look like. So, uh, a child, you know, starts school on Monday, uh, face-to-face. So they're physically at the building. They walk through their, uh, seven periods of the day. On Tuesday, that child is at home, but just because they're at home doesn't mean they sleep late. They actually wake up at the same time, have breakfast and then they begin their remote learning. So at the same time, English one starts in the face-to-face, English one remote starts. And so that child would log onto their, uh, their device and have that live experience with that teacher. And so that is our high school environment next year, again, alternating every other day between school at home for our high school students. I mentioned earlier, the phase in process because of our current, uh, COVID-19 situation in Ector County, uh, we're going to need to phase in the start of school. We simply cannot have a large numbers of students on our campus as we begin the school year. Um, and you can see our phasing process. We will do this for approximately a, a four-week period of time. Phase one, you can see the students that we will be serving. I, I hope you'll take note. The primary group of students that we're serving in phase one are students with either no or very limited internet access. I'm going to talk more about that in just a minute. But I want you to see that those kids have priority. We have approximately 39% of the students in ECSD, they'd either have no access to, to broadband in their home or very limited access. Again, more about that in just a minute. But those kids have a priority and they will be the very first group of students that we will be serving in ECSD. In fact, our students without broadband access. So if you're a student and you do not have internet access in your home, you have a couple of options. Option number one is we're going to provide that free of charge. We've received several different grants that will be providing funding, uh, for one year for a parent in our community that currently does not have broadband access. We will provide that assuming that they live in an area that currently has access to broadband. Again, I'll hit that in just a minute, but know that if you live in that area, we're going to provide it free of charge for one year. That is through June 30th of 2021. If you do not live in an area that has access to broadband, then those children will be allowed to come to school five days a week. And that's whether you're in elementary, middle or high school. If you do not have broadband access in your home, uh, you will be allowed to come to campus every single day pre-K through 12th grade, so that you can use the tools that we're providing, um, in that school environment. And that includes access to ECSD broadband. And then phase two, we add another group of students, starts August 18th, phase three, the 24th, and then phase four, the 28th. I think the important information that I would share at this point is that August 12th is the first day of school in ECSD. And every student, all 34,000 kids will begin school on a Wednesday, August the 12th. Most of our kids will start remotely in a virtual environment. And then some of our kids will start face-to-face, but every child begins school on Wednesday, August the 12th. Next steps, um, we, on Monday, I mentioned earlier that every parent in Ector County will have to make a choice as to what type of learning situation they want for their child. For elementary, middle, that is a hundred percent remote or a hundred percent face-to-face or the hybrid. And then our high school students will have to choose between the hybrid model and completely remote. So those choices have to be made between July 29th and August 2nd. Our parents will be engaged in that process. Um, our, all of our staff members return on August 5th. So we'll welcome, uh, a, a bunch of new teachers and our returning teachers to ECSD. We're excited to be able to do that. And again, uh, the, from the 5th through 11th, we'll be distributing lots of devices to our kids and families. And then August 12th is the first day of school. Right. Last, I want to end tonight with a, a couple of words that I've used this throughout, and that is broadband and connectivity. Uh, I want to paint a, a picture for you. Uh, some of you are aware and, but some of you may not be. We've been working over the last several months on an, an extensive, uh, broadband opportunity. Today in ECSD, almost 39% of our kids either do not have access at all to, uh, internet in their home or they have very limited access. And I want to paint a clear picture for you tonight, uh, not only across the country, but what, what it looks like in ECSD. So specifically in the United States, you can see based upon income, uh, the, the, the more poverty that a family has, uh, the more likely they are to not have broadband access. And you can see that broadband access is typically associated with income. Clearly, the more money you have, the more likely you are to have broadband access for your children in their home. In ECSD, it becomes more apparent. So one in five students in ECSD rarely or ever has access to reliable internet. Think about that. That's one in five of our kids rarely, if ever, have access to, uh, the internet within their home. And you can see the breakdown of what that looks like, uh, by the types of kids. 19% of our kids sometimes have internet, 10% rarely have it, and then 10% never have the internet, uh, in their home. Um, about a third, you, you, this is interesting. Uh, many of our families tell us that this device, a cell phone, is their only form of internet in their home. They don't have wireless. They simply have a cell phone. And for many of our kids, I think about that family of three. I think about that high school kid that is writing a term paper on a cell phone. Or I think about that middle school kid who is doing a, a, a project, a PowerPoint presentation perhaps, and they're using a cell phone to create the content. Or maybe that elementary student, uh, that is keeping up with some reading or maybe their teacher has asked them to do a little bit of research and they're doing that research on a cell phone. You know, all of those examples are unacceptable in today's society, yet many students in ECSD, that is their only option, uh, in which to access that information or to complete assignments that are given to them by their teachers. Um, one in six households in the western and southern portion of our county have, they report that they have no uh, internet connection. And sometimes that has nothing to do with funding. That has to do with the availability of broadband access in certain parts of our community. You heard me mention earlier that if we have a family in ECSD that cannot afford broadband in their home, we'll actually pay for that for one year. The problem with that is not every family that, uh, that cannot afford the internet has the ability even bring it into their home because the infrastructure in our community doesn't exist. This is an interesting map. Uh, this map indicates each of those tiny little red dots is a student in ECSD. The large orange circles indicate where we have a healthy number of students living. And those students do not have broadband access to internet in those areas. And again, unacceptable. Uh, those students compete for jobs. They compete for college. They compete with their peers for grade point averages. Those students have deserved to be as competitive as everyone else. And yet because they live in those locations, they do not have the same level of access to broadband that their peers do that live in other parts of our community. And as a system, we're committed to doing something about that. You can see on this slide, the different types of models that we're looking at. Um, on the left side, the different ways that communities across the United States have come together to create solutions for their students, the different types of business models that communities have established, the different types of network technologies that are used today to provide service for families. And that the different types of relationships or partnerships that have come together to create options for communities. We're, we as a school district are exploring, um, all of this right now. More information is forthcoming. Uh, these are some funding opportunities that not only we have as a school district, but our community has. These are state and federal funding opportunities and the types of dollars that are available for us to, uh, to go after. And then there is something coming up in August. The federal government has an auction on, uh, in, um, October. And the areas on this particular map that are in blue in our district, uh, in our county are eligible uh, for broadband access using, uh, the funds that are available for this auction. So we're paying close attention to this. This could be a really interesting opportunity for Ector County as we explore this, uh, potential connectivity for rural parts of the United States. But you can see there's a lot of blue on this map and we have students that live in all those areas that could potentially be a funding opportunity for our organization. And then lastly, these on the left side, these are the different types of models, uh, that we're looking at. Um, and then you could see the different types of technology, everything from fiber optic cabling or running to the home to different hybrid models involving fiber and LTE. And then, um, also satellite, um, opportunities as well. So this is a big body of work with which we are engaged. And the reason we're doing that is because again, 39% of the students in our system do not have what other students have. And, and we must make sure as a school system that we provide an adequate and rigorous educational experience. And because not all of our, all of our students have broadband, um, this has become, uh, one of our top areas of concern. So that's a lot. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of that content, um, or, uh, anything else that's on your mind. So.
Council Dr. Murray has been fantastic and, uh, really is a godsend to our community. He, uh, has been plugged in the entire time with the leadership. Uh, the meetings that we have on Wednesday, kind of talking about how to handle COVID in our community. Uh, he has been right there with us the entire time, even through the summer, and has done a fabulous job. So, um, I will open it up for anyone who has questions.
Hi Scott, this is Peggy.
I don't have any.
I think we both started. Mara, go ahead and I'll come back in. This is Peggy.
Go ahead, Mara.
Thanks Peggy. This is Mara. I don't have a question, but as a former educator, um, retired, I guess two, two years now. I would just like to thank you, Dr. Murray, for your leadership. Um, I still talk to a lot of teachers and of course, a lot of students. And I believe, I wrote a few words down here, flexibility, that, that stands out and we appreciate that. Your realistic approach, knowing that, um, everybody doesn't fit into the same box is, is very much helpful, especially as we tread the waters of COVID and how to go back to school and how to treat each kid where they can be appreciated. Your calmness, I believe I will pass on from some teachers that I am in contact with. And I believe your calmness has calmed a lot of teachers. And if the teachers are calm, then the kids are going to be calm, more calm.
I agree.
Um, I also want to thank you for recognizing how trauma is affecting our kid. Um, oftentimes we just think that kids need to go back to school and they'll be okay. Our kids are not okay. And I see it every time I interact with a kid, you know, wherever I am or just walking through a grocery store. You can see it in their eyes that they're not okay. And so I thank you very much for, um, just being flexible enough to recognize these areas that are very important to the teachers as well as the kids, especially trauma, because the teachers are going to have to be patient with the kids. Uh, because before this happened, our kids came to school with a lot of baggage. And a teacher had to be, you know, ready to handle that baggage on top of educating that kid. And even more so now. So I do appreciate all that you're doing and all the ways that you're allowing yourself and your staff and, um, the teachers to be flexible in reaching not just the bright kids, but all kids. Because even those who can go right on and, and move on to the next grade, they've still been affected. And so I just want to personally thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Very kind.
Peggy?
Uh, hi Scott. You know, we talked about earlier, I had to ask you about these mobile units that were sort of made hotspots at schools because we had been, it talked to at council that this was an opportunity, that there were going to be mobile, uh, vehicles that had hotspots at, at, at schools. After I talked to you, you said that's not a possibility, right? I mean, I want us to understand that because I think we're all thinking that that's something that could happen. And it is not, right?
Yeah. So the, uh, we, we may be familiar with a hotspot, simply an electronic device that, that some people use to get internet access, uh, mobily or maybe in their home. But in our community, we, we actually own hotspots. We could give those to students, but some of our students would take them home and they wouldn't be able to connect to anything. There, there is no infrastructure in their area. And while a hotspot is a solution for some kids, it's not a solution for many of the kids that live in the south and in the western port of our, part of our community.
So are there mobile vehicles that will be at different schools that, that do increase the capacity for internet? Does that exist?
It, it, uh, it doesn't, it does. We, we can increase the, the ability of the internet in our school buildings to, uh, to serve a, a wider circle, but it's not going to solve our problems. Again, in the south and the west, we still have kids that live far beyond the circle, if you will, um, of, of, uh, connectivity. And, and those are the families that, uh, that are going to suffer. Um, and so what we're doing is allowing those kids to come to school five days a week. So that whether pre-K or through high school, so that they can have connectivity. But the long-term solution is every single family has got to have broadband in their home. And it's an infrastructure problem. Um, you know, wireless on buses and hotspots for us, that is not going to solve the problem. It's an interesting Band-Aid, but it's not the permanent solution.
Okay. Well, thank you. I echo Mara on thanking you for all that you're doing. And, and I just wanted us as the council to understand that, that the solution is much, much bigger and broader than, than just being able to park some vehicles at school.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
This is Councilman Shelton, how are you doing?
I'm doing very well, thank you, sir.
You, you new to this, just like I am, I'm new to this too.
That's right.
We are both doing the same thing. In the south, they just, AT&amp;T just put the, the fiber units up already in the south and towards my area and everything. So y'all need to check into, look into that and see about with AT&amp;T and see because I just got the fiber stuff over at the church. We had the dial-up, now we have the fiber, which is much better.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right.
In the area and everything. And can you do me a favor, can you send me that proposal to my email, please?
I, I cer, I certainly can, I, actually, I can send it to the mayor, and then he can distribute if that, if that works well.
Happy to.
I just want to commend you on the wonderful job and keep up the good work. And if you have our support and anything that we can do for you, we'll try to do the best that we can, okay?
Appreciate, thank you, I appreciate that.
Other council members. Scott, thank you, hope, do you?
Thank you, I'm a little slow on my finger here, sorry.
That's all right.
Dr. Murray, I just want to, as Mara and Peggy said, thank you. And, and the, the challenges that we have are community challenges. We're all in this thing together.
Yes.
And, and I think that's the most important part is that we all together can make a difference. And thank you for what you're doing to make a difference.
I appreciate that, and I felt that, you know, since I've been here, and appreciate the support of all of you. And I've, I've interacted with many of you in a variety of venues, and the support has been significant. And as the mayor said, we meet every Wednesday morning at eight-thirty, so I'll see you in the morning, Mr. Mayor. And we have a healthy conversation about what's good for our community. And, and so I, it is, it takes the village, and this village is really working hard to make sure good things are happening, not only for kids, but for all the residents of Ector County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
See you tomorrow. Next is, Randy is going to talk about the August thirty-first memorial update. So I will let Randy take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. I just wanted to come and kind of give everybody an update as to where we are in the process of commissioning a new art piece. As many of you know, we opened a call for artists back in February and had over a hundred and forty artists from across the United States apply for this commission. The budget for the piece is three hundred thousand dollars, which the first hundred thousand dollars of came directly from the outside agency budget that we submitted a couple of months ago, so thank you to the city council for that. It was narrowed down to our three finalists, and they have started, actually, they're putting the finishing touches on their proposals, which are due August seventh. One thing that has arisen in the last couple of weeks as we've been preparing to accept these proposals is that Steve Patton and I have gone to Memorial Gardens and looked around discussing the placement of that piece at Memorial Gardens. And we do think that that is the, the proper place for this piece. It's a great, you can see it from Forty-second Street, it's a great gathering place. But as, as we all know, that garden, that park is used for so many things. We have all of the flags there for nine eleven, we have, you know, Alzheimer's walks, we have Hunger Action Month, all kinds of organizations use that as a gathering place, which is fantastic. Except that it wasn't really designed for gatherings of that sort. So Steve and I put our heads together and talked to the landscape architect who originally designed the park. And so now we're looking at even redesigning the park in a way that highlights the new piece of art and allows for some social distancing gathering. And then maybe in, you know, after there's a vaccine, we, and we get to congregate, we can actually congregate there. And we have some preliminary designs for that as well. So August seventh, we will have our finalists submit their proposals. It will go to our selection committee, which is made up of the mayor, Mr. Marrero, many of the families and victims plus community holders. There's about twenty-five people on that committee, and they will decide which is the best design. And we are hoping to announce that on the observance of the one-year anniversary. So that is my very, very, very short with no slides presentation of where we are today.
Randy, do we have any locals that made the final?
We, we did not, and in fact, I went out and encouraged a lot of our local. Not many of them did, but I will tell you, the types of installations we're looking at and the, the scale, there are not a lot of people locally that can do what we're asking people to do because this is a very significant piece, and it's got a very large budget. And we want to make sure that whoever we commission has a lot of experience in working with this type of thing. I talked to El Paso, I talked to other cities that unfortunately, we share the same fate and talked to their arts councils about the things to do and not to do. And it was important to make sure that we looked at artists that have worked in this arena before and understand the sensitivity of the piece that we're trying to commission.
Any questions?
Randy, what are, give us the cliff notes on some of the criteria that you're looking for.
Sure, we're looking for the ability to come in on time and under budget. I mean, this is, as, as sensitive as this is, it's also, you know, it's a job application. And so we're looking at artists that have completed installations of this sa, same type of budget that have worked with arts councils and municipalities before, that have had experience with sensitive subject matter and know how to communicate not only with the city governments and the arts councils, but with the general public as well. It's important that the community feels like this was done cooperatively and not done for them, but done with them. We want to make sure that the community buys into the design and the artist and the location, and everybody feels good about this, which is why we've taken our time in, in doing this and reaching out to those specific artists.
The piece is really, we want it to be, in essence, a place to go where every person can deal with their emotions. Everybody has different emotions, especially families, and the families have been center. Especially the seven, they're the ones that lost the most. And keeping them involved as they, as much as they want to be. Some are still mourning in a way where they may not want to address this yet. But we need to continue to work and move forward. And so Randy has done a fantastic job, Renee Earls has been key. She is very, she is plugged in with those families. Renee is fantastic about handling the delicate, you know, the delicate situation. And she's done a fantastic job keeping them as involved as they want to be. And so we really felt like that was one of the keys of keeping them, because it's really, it's one of their loved ones.
Absolutely, you are, you are so correct, Mr. Mayor. And the family members that are interested are, are being very participatory, very active. And we've been fielding questions and getting feedback, and that's been wonderful. And the people that aren't quite ready, you know, we just give them their space. And a lot of them have just said, you know, you have our blessing, keep us posted, let us know what's going on. But I just can't, you know, deal with this on a day-to-day basis.
Any questions? Just, we're on the cer, on the topic of a memorial. This Sunday will be the one-year anniversary of El Paso's, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And I'm issuing this proclamation saying that Sunday is the day Odessa will stand El Paso strong to be with them in their time of mourning. So, okay, thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under section five, other council actions, number one is consider bid award to contract Fabtech wastewater solutions for a half-bridge clarifier, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening, and appreciate your consideration and the, as to the award of a bid to rebuild our final clarifier at the Derrington plant. We have four final clarifiers at that plant. Over the last four years, we've reconstructed three of them. This is the internal mechanisms, lots of steel, major gearbox and those things. And so this would be the fourth and last one. This is, this work has not been done in over thirty years. And so we certainly would expect this to last quite some time. Fabtech Wastewater Solutions LLC has done the job the last three times and provided the low bid in this proposal. US Haven Company also provided a bid, and was second in to the low bid of Fabtech for three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So we would request your consideration in completing this work, and ask for your consideration. Any questions?
Any questions for, Mr. Kerr? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
You have a second? A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next, consider award to contract to FERS for the Odessa Police Department's Phase Three Interior Finish, Finish Out. Chief Kirky.
Good evening, Council Mayor. We come before you tonight with a proposal to accept the bid from FERS to finish out our training facility, which is the old central fire station. If you recall this, the funds to do this was, were awarded to us during the, with the certificates of obligation. FERS did come in with a low bid at two million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and their calendar days to completion is two hundred and forty-five from, from start. This, we, I believe we had three point five million dollars allocated to the entire project. So with the two million, three eighty-six, two forty, we also have, have a bill of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars due to the architect. And then the rest of that, those funds can go to furnishing the building and are helping to offset some costs with the animal control shelter that we, that we also have in, in the works. Or at the end of all of that, with, with, you know, funds left over, will we turn them to the council?
Spend them.
Well, I'm sure we can, sure we can.
You'll find a way to spend it.
Are there any questions for Chief?
No, but it is, but it is to, to, and under budget.
You know, we, we did it, I believe at the, at the right time, and things just came to me.
I will entertain a motion. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Echo, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Welcome, Chief.
Next, under ordinance. Consider calling the twenty-twenty general municipal election. Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance will call the twenty-twenty general municipal election for November third, twenty-twenty, as required by the city charter and the Texas election code. The election would consider the election of mayor, city council districts one, two, and at-large for a four-year term. The vote centers are identified in the ordinance, and the early voting period has been extended by Governor Abbott's proclamation that was signed yesterday. So he extended the early voting by six days. The early, the early voting will be Tuesday, October thirteenth through the nineteenth, and we're still waiting on the state for the hours of those elections, those added days. And this election will be a joint election with the county of Ector and the county of Maryland.
Any question? I'll entertain a motion. Motion and second, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider making Article three dash twelve flood damage, Ravaan.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Council. Currently, CDO for Odessa meets national flood insurance programs, community rating systems, requirements for Class A, and implements a one-foot rebord requirement for any building or structure. And starting January first, twenty-twenty-one, the IFIP's community rating system will begin implementing a new prerequisite for achieving Class A. Enforcement of a one-foot reward standards for equipment and mechanical items. In order to retain CRS Class A rating, the CDO for Odessa needs to amend the Article three dash twelve flood damage prevention in the city code of ordinance by adding subsection seven. And the subsection seven shall read, "Equipment and mechanical items. All new construction or substantial improvements shall be constructed with electrical, heating, ventilation, plumbing, and air conditioning equipment and other service facilities, a minimum of one foot above the base flood elevation, as such elevation is determined by the city engineer." The staff recommends the council adopt the proposed ordinance to amend Article three dash twelve flood damage prevention in the city code of ordinance. I'll be happy to answer to your questions. Any questions?
Does this add a lot of cost? Or I mean, is this something that contractors are going to be upset about? Is this standard, I mean, I don't really know what this is.
Ms. Peggy, I don't think so, this is, when, this is basically for people who lives in flood plan. And in the flood plan, we have certain requirements, how high to build a house, houses. In this case, we are talking about the finished floor elevation. And this new requirement is for basically air conditioning units outside of the building. See, this is basically, at this point, we are saying at the, at or above base flood elevation. And the new, the new requirement is one foot above that base flood elevation, just for safety, please.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question for that. So in a residential home that has their air conditioning, condensing units that sit on a slab on the ground, and they're in the flood zone. So when they replace those units in a residential home, that's going to have to come up a foot? Is that correct?
Probably not for the existing ones, we are talking about new construction.
Okay, okay. I know that there are a lot of old homes in, in the flood zone area in my district. And, you know, when you, when you have to start making those kind of modifications, it could also involve electrical and plumbing and a variety of things. And, and just wanted to see what the impact to our older residents are going to be.
Well, if they will do a substantial improvement, which is actually fifty percent the cost of the house, more than fifty percent, in that case, they have to bring up to the standards everything, including there.
Okay, okay.
If I may, this is Tom Kerr. If we don't implement the ordinance, the insurance cost-
the insurance cost will rise for all of the people in the, uh, uh, floodplain areas because the rating that we will receive will not be as, uh, uh, favorable. Uh, so that, that, that hopefully, uh, helps them with their costs over the long term anyway.
Well, hopefully, you know, it just still, you know. I, I like said, uh, when it, if it's just the minor replacing an air conditioning unit, then, you know, I don't think that's going to be anything that's a tremendous problem for them. But just wanted to double check.
Right, right, yes, appreciated.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, thank you, uh, next under resolutions, uh, consider allocation of five hundred thousand of care, coronavirus relief funds and establish the cities of Odessa's business assistant program. Uh, Mr. Marrero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the item for your consideration this evening is the allocation of five hundred thousand dollars in coronavirus relief funds and the establishment of Odessa Business Assistance Program. The program was designed or is designed to help businesses impacted by COVID-nineteen. I, I will attempt to share something on my screen. If I can get to it, excuse me, in a second. I apologize, Council, give me one second, see if, that's not it. Council, I apologize, I'm having trouble getting, um, the item on the screen, but I, I will talk you through that. Uh, if you recall, um, back in May, the council was considering a number of different, um, categories in which to allocate its, um, uh, CRF dollars. Uh, those included, uh, medical expenses, um, public health expenses, payroll expenses, compliance with health measure expenses, as well as economic support. Uh, in the area of economic support, the, um, the coronavirus, uh, the CRF task force, along with members of the Odessa business developments, small business development center, the Odessa Chamber of Commerce Economic Development, as well as community members, including Jack and Norris and, um, uh, Cruz Castillo, uh, designed a program that was, uh, uh, going to be made available to small businesses. There was a particular en- uh, emphasis on businesses that weren't able to access many of the other federal programs that were available, such as the PPP program and others. Uh, this truly was designated or designed to, to, to identify and, and to help those small businesses that oftentimes did not have, um, banking relationships or have the necessary documentation to be able to qualify for some of those more, um, for some of those other federal programs. Uh, the, uh, program has been designed in order to provide grants that range anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars to businesses with twenty employees or less. Businesses who qualify can submit applications as well as the required documents. Those documents will re- reviewed by the City of Odessa Business Assistance Program Advisory Committee. Members of that committee will be able to assist any eligible businesses by answering questions, uh, regarding the grant, as well as helping them complete the application. And we'll talk more about the committee in, in a, in a second. Um, in terms of, uh, the program, we'll talk a little bit about what the, uh, program is eligible to be used for. So who is eligible for the program? So the, the small business, uh, small businesses in the City of Odessa who have been impacted by COVID-nineteen. Uh, the grant is available to businesses who suffered interruptions, that's business interruptions, that occurred on or after March eighteenth, twenty-twenty. March eighteenth is significant because that is the day that the mayor issued his, uh, declaration of disaster, therefore initiating a number of closures throughout, uh, throughout the entire city. Uh, these interruptions, uh, must resulted in, um, uh, closures of, of the businesses, voluntary closures to promote a social distancing, or resulted in decreased customer demand. Uh, the funds can be used for a number of things and some of those examples include, but are not limited to, uh, fixed assets, fixed assets, including equipment and machinery, personal protective equipment, technology, contactless payment devices, uh, and business software. I'll, I'll go back to technology. You know, the reality is that many businesses have, have now, um, uh, because of COVID-nineteen, have had to look for different forms uh, to promote, not to promote, but to, to, um, uh, provide their services and many have taken to online. So in terms of technology, those would include things like on, online order and payment systems. Uh, it also is available for services, including working capital, payroll expenses, healthcare benefits, uh, supplier payments, rent, lease, or mortgage payments for real property used by the business, such as their storefront or warehouse, rent or lease or purchase payments for business properties, such as delivery trucks, delivery vehicles or food trucks or kitchen equipment. And finally, it's, uh, it can be used for marketing, uh, such as, uh, web design, web design improvements or redesign and the cost of digital marketing. Again, many of the businesses prior to COVID may have not necessarily needed to have these things um, as, um, uh, as, as methods to, uh, to promote their businesses. But as a result, they've now had to look for new ways to market themselves. So the committee felt that a marketing would certainly be an expense that would be eligible. Uh, in terms of what are the requirements? So this is designated, as I mentioned before, for businesses, for for-profit businesses with twenty employees or less. The businesses must be located in the city limits of Odessa. Must have been in operation for at least one year prior to March eighteenth of this year. They must be registered to do business in the state of Texas. They must be able to prove loss of revenue due to COVID-nineteen. They must have an annual gross revenue less than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They must currently not be in bankruptcy or have filed bankruptcy within the last twelve months. Uh, and the business must be current with all property taxes, state and city sales tax and any city fees. Also, there are conflict, conflict of vision, of interest provisions. Uh, any city council member, elected official, staff member, or any member of the advisory committee or their immediate family would not be eligible for grant assistance. Uh, in terms of how much a business can receive. Uh, so businesses that, um, have an annual gross revenue of up to one hundred thousand dollars can receive twenty-five hundred dollars in grant assistance. Uh, businesses generating, uh, one hundred, hundred thousand and one dollars in annual gross rev- gross revenue up to two hundred and fifty thousand can receive five thousand dollars in assistance. And any business earning more than two hundred and fifty and one dollars up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars can receive up to ten thousand dollars in grants assistance. Businesses can apply, uh, by submitting an application and one or more of the following documents: financial statements, business operating bank statements from the past year, or a check register detailing business expenses, twenty-nineteen business tax returns, or sales tax reports. Uh, the, uh, committee was very, um, uh, uh, forthright in terms of, of, of identifying what a business would need to have in order to apply. They wanted to make this as simple as possible. Uh, they, they wanted to make sure that the businesses didn't find themselves, um, uh, thinking that it was too much paperwork, uh, to do this. So they settled on any one or more of these documents and most businesses will have this. I mentioned the committee earlier. The committee, a committee will be comprised of local, uh, local individuals with, with banking, finance, or business experience in order to make themselves available to any of, any businesses requiring assistance. Uh, and they will be the ones who will guide and mentor and also review these applications. Finally, any application has to, uh, has to include, uh, valid proof of identification, proof of the business being located within the city limits, and a W nine. Um, that is the basis of the program and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I do. This is Mara. I don't have questions, just some things that I would like to, um, make sure I understand. Will the council be able to see who is applying for the grants?
Mi- Ms. Willis, we can certainly make those applications available to the council.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to see that. Also, um, I have a, I want to thank the committee for making this process seemingly simple. Uh, because my concern is that, as Michael stated, um, some of the people that I know who po- probably would, uh, qualify for these grants may be, um, paper shy, if they see a lot of paperwork that they have to do. Um, and I think what that, what the committee has asked for will validate the need, you know, for it without a lot of extra paperwork. I am concerned about the marketing of it. Um, how do we reach, the, the same people who may be afraid of the paperwork may also not be on the City of Odessa website. They may not know to search for this. Um, they, some of the people I can think of, they don't even use debit cards at this point. And so to say they just need to go on the website and look at it, that's probably not going to be enough. I think we are going to have to, Michael's, whoever, you know, he, um, appoints or puts on this task and ourselves are going to have to make sure that we let everyone or as many people as we can know about this, so that there is equal opportunity for, for a diverse group of people to apply for the grant. That's a concern that I have. I'm willing to, um, work, help get, you know, help get them to the place where they can get an application. But I just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to apply because it's, you know, the little small ma and pa, um, businesses who do so desperately need the help. They unfortunately may not go to the website just right off. Now, they may be guided to it or can be shown how to do it. But a lot of that's going to have to be done by somebody, us, the committee, Michael. Um, I just think it's really important that we put everybody on an equal footing as, as we can. The other thing, uh, conflict of interest, I wanted that to be clear. Um, on the PowerPoint, it had a, and this is, I guess, the teacher in me, but it makes a difference. Um, where it said City of Odessa elected officials and their immediate family on the, on this form. And on this form, there's a comma that says City of Odessa elected officials, comma, their immediate family, and it does change it. So I think the comma should be there and I think what it's saying is that City of Odessa elected officials, comma, their immediate family members, comma, and then so on and so forth, are not eligible. Is that correct? Is that what it is saying?
Yes, ma'am, might be eligible.
Okay, so probably instead of and, I, I'll, I'll point that out, but the PowerPoint, uh, I believe the comma is correct and it makes it what the committee is, is meaning to say. Immediate family members, is that defined anywhere or? Do we just assume it's, uh, m- mother, father, sister, brother, the, you know?
Michael, Michael, didn't you say the city had a conflict of interest form that was fairly, uh, encompassed with, with, uh, definitions and all?
Yes, yes, sir. We, we have a form that we use generally on contracts and other, and other documents.
That addresses what, what Mara is saying.
Just might want to address it so there's no question, you know, for whoever's, uh, reviewing the applications, they will be able to know that. Um, I have one other question. One, um, if, say, a company applied and let's just say I'm XYZ company, I apply and I have a, a subsidiary, subsidiary co- company XYZ plus one. Do I get to apply again or do I just apply one time under XYZ company?
The way this was set up in, in our discussions, we were going to provide one grant to one business. So it's a separate entity, I think we would, we would look at that as well.
Might want to just point that out, just in case there's a question.
I, I'd like to address Mara's question in regards to, uh, the marketing partners. That is something that we feel like is so important and I think the other thing that is so important and it's a collective effort of all the council with regards to, we all know those that may be needing the money and, and, and need to fill out the application, et cetera. I think, I think it is extremely, uh, important that we reach out to them also. I, I just think that, uh, uh, you know, in regards to, to this, this, uh, effort that we're all trying to do as, as a, uh, as a group, I think it's important that, that, uh, as far as the names that get it, that, you know, we have a little hurrah, uh, quite often and, and, uh, uh, showing where the money's going out and those type of things and, and that, uh, and that we're reaching out and, and hitting people that were, are so desperate right now. I just think that's so important.
Right, and Dewey, I was just wanting to make sure we could, you know, I want to stay legal. I wanted to make sure that we could reach out to them without, I won't go with three or four others, but, you know, if, if I reach out, I just want to stay legal. I, I like free, I like being free. I don't want to be in trouble.
Mara, one of the, the things that we needed is approval of the council to number one, do that, this, and then these would be printed up. And we will all have access to those. We can give them out to different companies.
Okay.
Reverend Shelton has talked about, uh, giving it out amongst the ministers, uh, to be able to talk about it in their church. We're going to do radio advertising and some television. Uh, we really want to, we don't want to spend a lot of money on administrative, but we needed to have the application ready and this handout ready so that we could actually go out and start talking about it and everybody's talking about it. You might, um, you might be interested in, we're, we're setting up a group to, um, to review these. And we're trying to do this in groups of like two or three. That would maybe have a financial person, a legal person, or a banker, or just somebody in business so that we can process these loans quickly. The idea is to do everything we can to get this money deployed and people to get their money quickly. Uh, and not anything be an impediment. If there's somebody that doesn't have any of these, but they have bank statements, then we're going to help them put together their grocery receipts. So we're going to have multiple groups. We're not trying to get eight people together to look at every application. We're going to have multiple groups looking at the different applications so we can get them in and get them out and then celebrate those whenever we award money.
And you're right, Peggy. I would like to, if possible, be a part of some of those, one or two of those groups, you know, I'm available and um, I'm very interested in it. Um, so, so yes, I would. And you guys have done a, a great job. I looked through it and the only other thing that concerns me is that I know people have already been asking me about the money. I think we all got a letter about the money. And so some people know it's out there, some people don't. I'd like to just ask that you consider a start date for everyone, you know, so that everybody can get to the start line at the same time, everybody who can. And then those who trickle in after that, that's one thing, but, uh, to just, you know, give a start date that's, that's, uh, reachable for those who are already ready. Some people probably just need to put it on paper uh, because they kind of know what it is and, and then there are those, like I said, who have no idea that they're even eligible. So if we could just give them a few days to kind of all line up at the starting line.
Council member Willis, thank, thank you for, for mentioning that. Uh, we are in the process of developing all the marketing materials, so there will be a start date. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, um, I think you saw an email address that hasn't even been opened up yet because there is still the development of and translation of this information back into Spanish. The, the prepar- the preparation of, uh, getting this, um, uh, to the TV stations, to the, to the other media outlets. All of those things are still being processed as well as the actual application form itself. So, uh, staff, staff needs a little bit more time to get all that developed and they will, we will announce a start date for it.
Okay, well, again, I'd like to, uh, thank Peggy Dewey and, uh, Reverend Shelton for, I mean, it, it looks really good and I think it's going to be a big help to a lot of people. A lot of people are, are hurting and, you know, even just, I was talking to my hairdresser today and she spent over two thousand dollars just on PPE so we can come look beautiful, you know, and be safe, but. I was talking to my hairdresser today and she spent over two thousand dollars just on PPE so we can come look beautiful, you know, and be safe, but so I thank you guys for all your work. I know you've had a, a lot of time put into this, so thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah. I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Who is, it, it's been mentioned about this committee, this review council, uh, who, who is on it and, and it, how is that organized?
We actually are meeting again on Thursday. Each of us are bringing names of a couple of volunteers that uh, are qualified and would like to be on this. Like I said, it's not one big committee. It's basically gonna be like hopefully three, two, three or four committees, groups of three people so that uh, we can review these applications quickly. Um, and we are asking for people, if you would like to be, or if you know somebody that would like to be, then we are gathering up names now before our meeting Thursday.
Yep.
The idea, um, is just that they need to be in a, in a position, um, you know, they need to have some business expertise. And, you know, if they've got a financial background or, you know, uh, or any, any kind of a background, banking background, whatever, uh, then, you know, they would be certainly someone that would be a good person. But the main thing they have to have is some time. Because this is a volunteer thing. We're gonna get applications. We're gonna review them. We're gonna get them out the door. Checks are gonna be written every Friday. So whoever wants to be on this has got to be able to commit the time to it for about three weeks.
At least.
And Peggy.
Five hundred thousand dollars is not that much when, you know, there's, there's enough hurting businesses that it, it could be gone in a hurry.
Right. Peggy, do we have a designated um, office, say maybe, I don't know, city hall office or somewhere for those who can't, who can't apply online and who would like to walk their application in? Is there, will there be a place for them to do that?
Council member Willis, those office, those applications will, can be delivered directly to the city manager's office.
Okay.
But, but we're not, Mara, we're not asking city staff to go through first all of these applications. We're skipping that process.
Oh, I agree.
Backed up and covered up. So, um, you know, we've really put a lot of energy into figuring out how this can happen very quickly. You know, the PPP money has been out to people, you know, since April. And so there are a lot of small businesses, micro businesses that are desperate for some help. So we really want to be on this quickly.
I agree. And there's a deadline for spending it. So that also is a reason to be on it quickly.
Right, right.
Yeah.
These amounts of money, it's probably not going to be hard for anybody to spend it before December, but you're absolutely right. Uh, one other thing I was just gonna say that we talked about, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, the conflict of interest, I want to talk about that just a minute because in the conflict of interest basically would just eliminate, in my opinion, it would eliminate a city council person, member from reviewing the application from, from one of their immediate family. I don't, I didn't really think that it should preclude if one of our council members has uh, somebody, a family in a small business that qualifies. In my opinion, it just means like any other thing, that council member wouldn't vote on this, wouldn't be part of it. But it would not necessarily exclude a, a, a legitimate eligible business from applying. Am I thinking about that wrong?
But in the requirements, it says they are not eligible.
That's what I'm talking about. We just put this together, but in our conversations, I don't, I'm not sure, at least I know on my part, that wasn't the intent. It was just that it's like we deal with things a lot that one of us have a conflict of interest on, but we just don't vote on it.
Right. That's why I was asking clarification.
Right, right. That's why I wanted to come back to that. I, you know, and I guess we could maybe talk about that in our meeting on Thursday, but I don't have an, I don't have a problem if an eligible legitimate business. You know, if Mara had a son-in-law or a daughter that had a business that was eligible or, uh, I didn't mean to single you out, Mara, but you know, any of us, it doesn't seem to me like that would be a problem as long as Mara or me or whoever it was wasn't making the decision to give the money in. And you remember the decision even to give the money out. There's not a whole lot that, that the committee has to decide. They just have to confirm the grocery receipts of a business. So that we're not picking and choosing. I mean, this is like, here's what it takes to qualify. And if you qualify, it's just that easy. You get the grant.
Okay.
Um, Peggy, you, uh, you said something that uh, made me begin to think about the approval process of this. Uh, so I want the council to to understand and then certainly they can direct me to do, uh, direct us to do something different. But given the speed at which the ca- uh, the, the council and the committee wants to get money out, uh, I am seeing this as being reviewed and approved by the committee members and then uh, uh, given the, the amounts of the checks, they're, they're so small in, in many cases that that, that approval would only be that of the committees. And therefore the council would not see these, these uh, individual approvals individually nor vote on them individually either.
I, and I agree. I only use the example because with, with various council members on the committee, it could happen on the committee. So so of the three or four groups that are looking at applications, if Mara was in one of those groups and her son-in-law wanted an application and wanted to apply, he could not be reviewed by Mara's group.
No, she had to uh, excuse herself and pass it on to somebody else.
That's what I was talking about. I didn't mean to imply that the whole council, you know, would be, would be looking at it.
No, and, and especially how you clarified, Peggy, that it's not a matter of picking and choosing. If you qualify and the money is there, pretty much, you get it.
Yeah, we're not, we, we are not picking and choosing. If you qualify, if you meet the requirement, you, then you can get the money. If you don't meet the requirement, then you don't get the money. It's just as simple as A and B.
Right.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Just might want to, Michael, be sure and revisit that, uh, um, conflict of interest. If, you know, if you're gonna issue out this printed information, make sure that that's clear.
We will, we will do so.
Tom, I thought, did you say something, Tom?
Yeah, uh, you know, I certainly agree that it needs to be easy and seamless and, and painless for the applicants. But it also needs to be adhered to and rigid enough to be correct. Uh, you know, I don't, uh, you know, we don't want to stand on the water tower and throw money. That's not what we're intending to do. So I just encourage those committees to at least adhere to the rules, not, not make it all that easy sounding. Uh, I, it normally the government makes things harder, you know, I get that. But in this case, I, I think we need to at least pull back a little bit.
Oh, I, we agree with that. Um, it's not, um, but, but we did try to make the backup documentation something that a legitimate business would have. They should have one of those four or five kinds of business documents. And if they don't, you know, for instance, we talked about what if they uh, paid everybody cash for contract labor and they were a cash business and they can't prove their cash receipts? Well, that's not something, I mean, you know, they wouldn't qualify if they can't prove that. So, and the intention is to, is to deal with legitimate micro businesses that, that have been in business. That's why we said for at least a year.
I'm sure we have enough businesses. We'll, it won't take long.
It won't take long at all.
No.
Legitimate.
Once, once they find out about it, they'll put the application in and then it shouldn't take that long for us to review, whoever's going to review the application and just have the money allocated. As long as they, as long as they follow the criteria that we have set down inside the, the brochure, that is it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just let us know when, if, if and when we get a start date.
I'll just remind, I'll just remind the council that uh, we, we'll keep the uh, involvement of the committee to the three council members already assigned.
Right.
I want to make sure that we don't have too many council members on that committee.
Okay. I will entertain a motion if no more comments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes unanimously.
Ooh, that was good.
That was good.
That was good.
Didn't you see your lips?
Now we move to. Appointment of boards. Ms. Grimaldo, do we have any?
Ms. Grimaldo, do we have any?
Uh, just to consider the capital improvement advisory committee?
Council, uh, I, I received a couple of names.
I received a couple of names.
Um, sorry for the echo, guys.
Sorry for the echo, guys.
Um, Deidre, you had.
Deidre, you had.
Uh, your names would be.
Your names would be.
Betsy Triple Hurt, I did have an opportunity.
I did have an opportunity.
You'd be happy to serve on the committee.
Happy to serve on the committee.
Mara, you've asked it. I, Mr. Gonzalez, Billy Gonzalez. He has agreed to serve on the committee.
Agreed to serve on the committee.
I talked with John Lang.
I talked with John Lang.
Serve on the committee.
Serve on the committee.
Any more?
Any more?
I would like if you would reach out to uh, I think I lost some names right now. I feel like, I feel like a, uh, like it's uh, Groundhog Day or something like that. Um, reaching out to uh, uh, Basin, uh, title, uh, Withrow, Mike Withrow. If you were without, if you'd reach out to Mike, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, anymore?
I had been told that Roy Allen would like to serve. I don't, I haven't talked to a thing, but I've been.
Be a good one.
Like to.
He'd be a good one.
Yeah.
Okay. Any others? Why don't we approve that next time? That way we can make sure everybody's good with serving on it. Talk to Roy and, uh, Withrow.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, we do have two um, executive sessions. Uh, Natasha, if we're going to do two, do we need, go ahead and do them both together or do we need to come back and then go back in? I'm a little concerned about the technology.
I think we can do it in one.
In one.
Okay. Um, then as authorized by the Texas government code, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney. The city council may adjourn into executive session to consider pending or contemplated litigation and reconvene in open session for possible action. Uh, also in personnel matters, deliberative employment evaluation, duties, discipline, complaint or dismissal of a public officer in perpetuity under Texas government code five five one point zero seven four. Um, for Carol Greg and Natasha Brooks, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
So we get out of this with.
Get out of this with.
Yes, ma'am. Then we go into the second one that we have.
Okay, I'll see the whole in, be in there.
Oh, Lord, I get in the second one.
You see me?
Yep, see ya. One more and we've got a quorum.
I'm here.
All right, I need a.
I'm moved.
Okay, we're moving out of executive session first.
Oh, so moved.
Executives.
The second, no action was taken while we were in executive session. Uh, all in favor of coming out of executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.